I had to bring my own glasses, Sue. I couldn't wear those home with alligator things on the side anymore. They're a little tacky. Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Thursday, February 21st. My name is Jim Leahan. To my left is my associate, Mr. Calcutt. To his left is Mr. Lindmark, our acting town administrator, and to his left is Susan Jacobson, our administrative assistant. Would you please, well, let me remind everybody that this meeting is both being audio and videotaped. It may be available through NCTV and on YouTube. And if you would stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, it's a treat, Mr. Lindmark, to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
So let's pretend we're Mr. Hathaway. Would you be kind enough to read the agenda, sir?
Certainly. Going to have Mr. Robert St. John for candidate for conservation commission. We have Barry from the DPW department to go over the budget discussion, some action items, considering the appointment of Mr. St. John. Please consider signing the acceptance of a deed and grant of Eastman's from Norway Farms. Consider a request by NCTV to use Town Hill for a fundraiser on April 27th. Also to consider the appointment of a fire chief. And then please consider the extension of contract for equipment rentals. I would make a recommendation that we consider that right after the DPW budget discussion.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sir, yep. The microphone won't help in here, sir, I'm afraid. It's for the folks at home. This is for TV. So we'll just have to yell louder. I apologize.
We'll follow up with a report of warrants and then a couple of discussion items, including the real estate tax rates with regards to Pin Oaks and Rivers Edge residents, selectmen's goals, and then an update on the budget, and then any other unanticipated business.
Thank you, sir. Mr. St. John, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Come on, please, join us.
All right. Do I grab this?
That'd be fine, sure. Or you're welcome to come to the table, whichever you prefer.
Whatever you'd like.
Whatever you'd prefer. One big happy family.
You both. Perfect.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
First, thank you for offering to go on the conservation board.
Absolutely.
That's a board that no one wants to go on. I don't know why.
All right, I'm leaving.
No, 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 don't do that, please, no. We're locking the doors. It is a difficult board to fill because it is so unique and you have a great resume for it. I think one of the reasons we wanted to visit with you because you are a Lake Street resident.
Correct.
And you have a vested interest in the pond, which
Correct.
There's nothing wrong with that and your issues are fine, but there are issues associated with how you could participate in any hearings associated with that, and we wanted to be sure that you had a clear understanding of that.
Absolutely.
Because it may influence whether or not you want to delay going on the board. If you were to go on the conservation board, if we were to appoint you, and I'm speaking only for me, not for Mr. Calcutt, but you have a great resume and we'd love to have you on the board, but you could not participate in any of the hearings. You couldn't participate either as a board member or from the audience. And I know you have an interest in it, and so that's why I wanted to be sure you understood.
I do understand that. Obviously, I do have a vested interest. Obviously, there are issues that I have personally at the moment. That was not my reason for getting on the board.
No, I understand.
And I've tried to make that as clear as possible.
You did.
I am supportive of what, generally, I think the improvements will be better for the road, for the pond, and ultimately for my property when things get corrected. I would encourage the town to include me in the discussions rather than keep me away.
Well, we can't do that. The rules regarding having an interest in any particular issue of that nature is such that you, if you're on the board, you have to recuse yourself from those discussions, but that would also mean you're accused from participating in the audience as well. And so that's why I wanted to visit with you so that you had a clear understanding of that.
Right.
And kind of leave it to you, because I know you do have an interest and I suspect you would like to participate.
I think I have to.
Then that would cause us to wait until
And when do you see the town coming before the conservation commission?
In the spring, I believe. Barry?
We're working on the allies a little right now. We're pulling all that together. Our intention is to get it as soon as we can because we want to be going on the work of Lake Street.
I know they're anxious to get it done, so I don't think it would be long, so.
My whole career has been one of expediting projects, of permitting projects, and whatever I can do to help along that regard, I would be happy to do that.
Okay. Kevin?
Appreciate that, thank you. I mean, that sounds like we have a pretty good understanding as to where we're going to go from here.
Yeah. No, you'd be great, you'd be wonderful on the board. You have a great resume for it. I just, that's why I wanted you to come in so that I didn't want there to be any misunderstanding about
No, and there, as I have also said, I mean, if there was just cause for anybody to have me recuse myself, I would, no question, I would do that.
We would have to require that, though, at the front end.
Oh, understand.
Yeah, okay. So is your preference to wait until that's over?
I think we have to.
Okay.
I can't give up my property rights.
Okay. That's what I was concerned about, and I don't blame you a bit. I would feel the same way.
Okay.
So will you promise to come back as soon as that's over?
Absolutely.
Okay. Promise?
We're gonna hold you to that.
We're gonna hold, yeah.
No, no, no.
We know where you live.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. No, that's absolutely fine.
Because we'd love your help. We really would love your help on that board.
Understood.
I just didn't want to create any potential conflicts associated with that. I don't think there will be any, but we have to be very careful when someone has an interest in that, that they have to recuse themselves from the process.
Understood. And again, whatever can be done to get me involved, sooner rather than later, I think it would be better for all parties.
As a citizen, you're free to participate in that process.
No, I would, anyway, but I'm just saying.
Because your email indicated that. That's why I thought, well, we better just
Yep.
I wanted to make sure you're comfortable with how you play in that role.
Totally.
So you'll come back, you promise?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming in today. Yep.
All right, next item is Barry from the DPW for the budget discussion.
Are you still on 36 hours without sleep?
I had two hours of sleep.
Okay.
I'm good.
This should be a fun presentation.
Are you done? No, kidding.
Yes.
Well, thanks for all you do.
You're welcome.
Kevin, I'll turn this to you.
So my involvement with the DPW budget has been mainly to stay out of the way. The guys have a fairly good understanding of everything that contributes to this. They have a great understanding of what's needed to be able to make everything work in the way it has been. Essentially, I was just a resource to be able to provide insight or to help where I could in getting some feedback on different items that were being proposed. Earlier on in the process, we discussed the addition of a position in the administrative office, which we think made a lot of sense. And working with Scott, I think we found a way to make that work. But for the most part, everything else has been all them, so I'll turn it over to Barry. He can go ahead and take us through top to bottom.
Top to bottom. So we'll start with the general, things have changed. We don't have a superintendent in place right now, so a lot of my responsibilities have become more for administration. So we're shifting some of my salary to the administration budget, so that's why there's an increase there. Highway, we have a slight increase.
There's an adjustment on the water side as well.
Yes. Yeah. So there's actually, the water side went down, the administration side went up to offset the adjustment in my funding of the position. Highway, we had a 14% increase. That is pretty much for just contractual agreements with raises and changes there. Grounds, we have a 2% increase, the same reason. It's all contractual obligations to raises. Cemetery, we have a slight increase in there. Reason being is we're having, we're doing a lot more burials on the weekends, so it's causing us to work overtime, so we have a slight increase in there as well. Vehicle maintenance, we have a 6% increase there, two reasons. Facilities has added several more vehicles, so that has increased costs there. We needed to add some money to the budget. We're also kind of planning ahead with Mr. Vito's retirement. We're gonna be relying more on outside resources for a little bit till we get settled, mainly dealing with police and fire. So we actually cushion that a little bit so we can cover our outside costs there. Solid waste went up a little bit. One of the things that's happening is we're getting a lot more hazardous waste at the transfer station. It seems like residents are either cleaning out basements and bringing in more material. It's also costing us more to dispose of those materials, so we have an increase there as well.
Are we still pretty much just break even on recycling?
Right now, the market is difficult. No one wants wood chips anymore. I mean, it's tough to get rid of cardboard and paper, so we're doing the best we can. You know, Paul Vito does a great job finding grants and finding the best way avenues for us to make some money, not just breaking even. But it's been difficult. Snow and ice, that's gonna remain the same. Do you have any questions on anything there?
No, I don't.
None on my side.
Pretty straightforward.
No, I know your budget pretty well, so.
When we look at the water enterprise fund, as I mentioned, there's a decrease in there. So it's basically shifting a my side, majority of my side from the water to the administration side of things. Still be involved with water, but right now I'm focusing more on, you know, the day-to-day operations. Waste water, we have a decrease there as well, which is good. We're actually looking at that thoroughly right now, looking at our rates, looking at our users, looking at percentages of things that are going on there. We're actually having an assessment done on the wastewater treatment plant to see what expenses we might have in the future. So that's being done currently in process.
Did we get any decisions on how we could rearrange those allocations?
We're going through that process right now. I don't think there's any options where we can rearrange. It's pretty much written in stone. One of the things we're looking at, there was several contracts. The idea is maybe to consolidate them all into one contract, bring every, all the parties together, and get one moving forward. There's just a lot of nuances to the history of that thing, and I've been getting up the speed on it, but still it baffles me at some moments.
Well, it's been baffled since I started.
It's definitely an interesting process.
So the allocations are still the way they have been on a percentage basis? They're still the same way?
Yeah, they are, yeah. So that's
Any, Kevin, maybe you know, any further discussion on the potential of taking it down Main Street towards Dunkin' Donuts?
We're having discussions. It's a process. There's some interesting nuances to that as well, you know, who, can we reallocate allocations? One of the goals we want to look at, as Bob has been talking about, is getting all the parties together in a room, sitting down, and discussing all of this. Some of the parties still aren't paying their bills timely, and there's lag there, so we just need to get everybody in the room, get on the same page, and figure out how to deal with this moving forward.
Has Eastern been okay?
Yeah, they've been okay. I mean, that's the process we're working on right now. Kevin's been involved in several meetings. I was at a meeting the other day, so this is something that we're working through. It's definitely on our, number one on our priority list right now, along with about 100 other things.
You'd have to change the allocations to take on, when you?
Legally, we don't know if we could do that.
But if you did take it on, you'd have to change them, would you not?
Wouldn't have to be all of them. It would just have to be one of them, I think, is what we're targeting.
See, that's the, everybody would have to agree to it.
Right.
Right? That's the thing, because we could actually, parties could say, I want all my allocations and I want to be able to allocate it to somebody else, so there's
And that's a risk.
Yeah.
And we validated that with town council as well, right?
Yeah, we had a good discussion with that the other day. We're fine tuning all these points right now, but I think the big and most important thing is taking the five contracts and getting, five agreements and getting them into one that everybody can agree to.
Right.
I would think that they want that.
It would just be easier for everybody.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have any other questions, Kevin?
None of mine.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions, do you want to discuss the extension of the contract?
Yes.
I got through page 26.
Oh, it's not that big.
Yeah, come on.
So this is a contract extension for our vendor, Kadash Estimating LLC. So he provides a lot of needed support to our daily operations. He supports the water, drainage, pavement preparation, so he's like the third arm of the DPW. We have a small staff. We can't get to a lot of things, and with his help, we can get a lot of things done. So we're looking to extend his contract.
And the extension's for two years?
Yes.
Kevin, any?
Are there things that he normally does during the winter periods that assist with some of the?
Yeah, he's, right now, we have Lauren Street, we found a drainage pipe. We're gonna piece that together. Rich is gonna come in, help us with that. So he's with us all the time. He's a great asset to have. He helps us on every, like roadway projects we're doing, water projects. He's just, he's mobile. He gets in, gets the job done, and he does great work.
Great.
And just to clarify, this would be an extension for one year, from January 1st to December 31st?
Right, it's an option for a second year.
Correct.
On a different topic, is there, maybe Kevin will ask you, was there just, there was some discussion about who was gonna put the order line through the bridge? Has that been resolved?
No.
Okay.
We're still working on that.
Does it make that much of a difference?
Not really. We're just trying to figure out the best-case scenario to get it done. So there's several options we're looking at right now, and hopefully one of them pans out. I know Bob and I are gonna kind of put everything together and come in and kind of present our thoughts and what we're looking at to the board.
Thank you.
That's it? Thank you.
So we need to vote this. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the contract extension for, name, 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 name.
I think you could just go equipment rentals.
Equipment rentals for the full year 2019 with an option for the full year 2020.
I will second. Further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Barry, thanks. Go to bed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
And thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I saw you out there plowing this morning. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We're just, we just want a real snowstorm. No more of this ice, sleet, you know, we just want real snow.
Be careful for what you ask.
Real snow, we can plow it, it'll go away.
You just, you just not, did not make a lot of friends here right now. Remember last March, last year?
Unfortunately, I didn't.
We're raking our, we're raking in February and died in March. We have a bunch of folks here tonight, and is there a particular issue that you'd like us to, so you don't have to sit through the whole evening, that you'd like us to get to first? Are you all here for the same reason?
The discussion about the taxes on Pin Oaks and Rivers Edge.
Oh, okay. Well, we can move to that.
Absolutely.
I was up at, I went up to Rivers Edge today, and I was told I was gonna meet with a small group that looked like everybody that lived at Rivers Edge, I think. But it was a good meeting, and this board doesn't have anything to do with the assessment process, just to let you know that. We, this is all under the Board of Assessors. It is not under this board. So it was an interesting discussion. There was some, and I can't, I haven't looked into Pin Oaks, but I think it's the same situation as Rivers Edge. We know that there are some extremes in terms of the taxes that you've received this year. The property taxes in Norfolk went up on average a little under 6% this year, the values, excuse me, the values. The values and the tax rate work in reverse, so when property values go up, the tax rate goes down. Property values go down, the tax rate goes up. Give you an example, the property values in 2008, when everything went in the wrong direction in the economy, if you took that same block of homes, no additional homes, and you looked at them in 2016, they just got back to the same value. So it took eight years for the property values under our assessed process, which is approved by the state, by the way. It took eight years for the property values to get back to where they were. Now, since 2016, we've had some pretty good growth, and property values have gone up substantially. And it did appear when I went to, I think I brought it with me, pardon me for going through this pile here, but there was quite a bit of strange numbers that happened at Rivers Edge. Well, anyway, I remember them.
Right up to the top there?
It's hidden, it's by the table.
Well, no, that's me. And so I did a lot of listening, and I really didn't have a lot of answers, but I did come back and visit with the assessor to try and see what was going on. And part of it has to do with resales, and when there are resales, if you bought it, and I'm making numbers up, if you bought it 400 I'll use my, let me use my own street. I live on Frederickson, and we're a dead-end street, and we haven't had any new construction in a lot of years. And there was a development, as you know well, there's a development that's gone in at the end of the street, and I think nine houses?
Yes.
They've built nine new homes, and they're all selling pretty high. And so our homes got reassessed based on those sale prices, and my taxes went up $1,000 because of that, more than it's jumped in any other given year. That's part of what's happened in both Rivers Edge and Pin Oaks, because you're starting to get some turnover, and you're starting to get some resales, and so condos that were purchased in the fours or early fives are now selling for six or six and a half. The ones down at Boyd's Crossing are selling almost up to seven. Let me finish, and I'd be glad to join in. This is just what I've learned today, and so I'm not judging it, I'm just telling you what I've been told. But what happened, apparently, is that we are always, you're always taxed a year behind on the assessed values. So it's not 2017, it's 2016 that we're looking at, and so it's always a year in reverse when we establish the assessed values. And those are values that then computed by our assessor, they're sent to the state, the Department of Revenue, they certify those assessments, and then that's what we get taxed on. For whatever reason, it appears, and I'm looking at my own sheet that I pulled today, that while the property values went up, and you folks can tell me this, because you get the assessed values as well, it appears that last year, your values should have gone up, but in fact, most of the values went down. And we have no explanation for that, because they should have gone up. So this, we have a new assessor and a new team in there, and so this year, when they went out into reevaluations, it became a double hit to a certain degree, because the assessment that should have been adjusted last year apparently was not correctly adjusted. And I can offer you no explanation to this, and I don't know why. I just learned this today. I'm looking at my own sheet. My property went down $12,000 from one year to another year, when in fact, I know the value went up, about $25,000. But for some reason, that's what happened, and I looked at a number, I did not look at Pin Oaks, but I looked at a number in Rivers Edge, and the same thing occurred. Condos that were valued at, I looked at one specific one that was valued at 523, excuse me, 533, that the following year should have gone up, four or five percent, went down to 520. So it dropped $13,000. It should have gone up to about 550. And so this year, it went up to close to six, and so it was a dramatic change from, for this person that owned this condo. I can't offer you any explanation why we're looking into it. We're trying to figure out how that happened. What I suggested to everybody at Rivers Edge is that you should go to the assessor's office, and you should ask them to come in and assess your property. We know there are mistakes on cards. I had one on my own house. I have a separate garage. They thought I had a playroom over the top of that separate garage. I don't. So there can be errors on those cards, so I would encourage you to go to the assessor's office. They'll welcome this. You'll need to let them into your property to assess your property, and you'll get an accurate assessment of what your values are. It could go up, or you should know this, that it could go either way. You know, I mean, your assessments may change up or down based on their personal visit of your property. You just need to know that. And you, you don't have to let them in, but if you want it reassessed, you have to let them in. So that's an individual choice, but that's your recourse today. They're trying to find, I mean, we can't fix what happened last year. It's done, it's been certified, we're done. We're gonna just make sure it doesn't happen again, but we can't fix it. There, what's happened this year is actually fixing what didn't happen last year, and I just learned this today. That's the most current information I can tell you on it. I don't know any more than that. But I did spend a good time, amount of time with both assessors, our assessor and assistant assessor today, and we went through a bunch of these, and the pattern was very clear, that this is what happened. And again, I would encourage you, I know that a number of people in Rivers Edge, maybe you folks have as well, have gone to the assessor's office. Have any of you done that?
We've all been assessed.
Yeah, and have you asked them to come in and evaluate your property?
They've been evaluated.
Yep, okay. That's your best recourse, and then you'll get a, you know, an honest evaluation of what your property's worth, and it's based on comps. And it has to be within 10% either up or down of whatever those comps are. They can't deviate. It's a 10% window, up or down, from whatever the comps are that are being sold in your area.
They did the comps, though, when I told that one of the things that they comped on was Boyd's Crossing.
No, no, they did not. That's not true. They comped it on the sales within your own, within your own subdivision. I was, I was under that impression as well, but that is not the case. It had nothing to do with Boyd's Crossing. Yes, sir. You need to grab the microphone, I apologize.
I'm Larry Sullivan, Margot's Way, Pin Oaks. There are a couple of things that I'd like to talk about. One, just for the record, that the people in Pin Oaks and the people in Rivers Edge pay for and provide a lot of the services that would otherwise be provided by the town if we own, if we own single-family homes. We have, it's a 55, both of them are 55-plus communities, and there are no residents in those properties that's under 18. So there's no impact, no adverse impact to the school budget, which is, which is good, and that's what makes these communities so desirable from a town standpoint. We understand, we understand that completely. But if we look at, as you said, the, the sales that have taken place in the, in the, in the general area, we look specifically at the sales that took place in 16 versus 17, I think it was 16 versus 17, in Pin Oaks. The sale price went up 4.3%, yet many, many residents, if not all residents within Pin Oaks, experienced double-digit percent increases in their tax bill. That's what I don't understand, a 4.3% documented increase in the sale price of homes, condos, within the development versus what actually happened as far as the tax, our tax bills are concerned.
I'm not the assessor, so I can't answer how the, they compute, I mean, I know how they do it, but I can't answer part of that, but I understand the issue that it's a 55 and up residence, and that you are, you know, condos, you're paying fees to have the roads cleared. They're not cleared by the town and so on, but that is a, that is a, that is really a developer's choice. Developers maintain those roads, they're private roads. They're not accepted by the town. The reason they're not accepted by the town is they don't meet town standards. So developers usually, especially in condos, maintain them as private facilities. This is why you pay condo fees, and they don't meet, our roads are 24 feet wide. Your roads are not 24 feet wide. And so they would not be accepted under the current conditions as town roads. It's less expensive for developers, Kevin, you're on the planning board, you know this, maybe you want to articulate it more efficiently than I do.
No, you're doing a great job.
So the developers choose this direction because it's less expensive for them to develop their infrastructure, and therefore they maintain it. There's nothing wrong with that. It's not a bad decision, but that's their choice, so they're not accepted roads by the town. Massachusetts doesn't allow a menu form of taxation. We can't, you know, I don't have any kids in school, you know, and most, you know, most people my age don't have kids in school, but we still pay for the schools. But we still pay for the schools. That's just the way it is. We pay a tax rate that subsidizes everything that goes on within our community. And we can't exempt a component of that. There are some exemptions that are available. I have them here for seniors, for anyone over the age of 65. But to be honest with you, they don't help most of us, because the income requirements associated with these exemptions, we're not going to meet them. So, but there are some available. The only one that really is of meaningful is volunteering. You know, within the community and the various departments, a lot of folks volunteer, and I have a neighbor that volunteers in the schools. Works, you know, works in the cafeteria, and they get up to a $750 exemption on their taxes for that. So there is that avenue. But outside of that, none of these exemptions really fit, to be honest with you. And we can't do anything outside of the state. The state regulates the exemptions that we can use. This is the state list, this is our list. I'd be glad to get anybody copies of that if you'd like it. But we have no flexibility in that. We can't.
Okay, and I appreciate your comments. And I don't dispute anything that you said. But what I would come back to is the 4.3% versus the double-digit increases. And it doesn't, one doesn't follow the other.
I agree. And the only thing I can begin to understand on it, and again, it all today. So, you know, I was up there at 2:00 today, and I was in the assessor's office at 4:00. So I'm learning about the issue. But if your property value, in this particular case, the one I looked at, the one condo in River's Edge was currently, it went from 522, I think I have the right numbers, I may be off, 1,000 or 2,000. It went from 522 to 600,000. That's a huge jump in assessed value. And that's a double-digit tax increase. But it went from 533 down to 522, when it should have gone up 4.5%, because our average property value that year went up 4.5%. Do the math, it should have gone up to about 550 or 555. It did the reverse. It went down $10,000. So that property owner, and I'm not excusing this, sir, believe me. That property owner paid a lower, had a lower evaluation of their property that year than they should have had. This year, it got corrected, and it made it a double-digit increase. On this one particular one that I looked at, that's what happened. I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying that's what happened. My only option that I, in talking with the assessor that I can think of, and that he can think of, is have your property assessed. Invite them out, they'll come, they'll go through your property and give you an accurate evaluation of what your property's worth. I don't know, I don't know another way to help. We don't get a vote, we don't. And we're puzzled as to how it got certified by the state. I can offer you no explanation to that. We're going to look into it. But the DOR certified our, our numbers. Yes, sir.
Two people from the assessor's office came through my unit, as well as one more at, at, at Pin Oaks. So I don't know, where do they go from their unit? Go back there and find out what they want, what they want to talk, what they want to talk about?
Well, they would, they would come back, and then they would, however they compute it, they would look at your card and make sure that everything is on the card and is accurate. For example, again, one of the ones I looked at today, they, you know, if you have a jacuzzi in your condo, that actually increases the value of your property, even if you don't. I have one in my house, I haven't used it for 20 years, but apparently, it increases the value of my property. In this one particular case, the person didn't have the jacuzzi, yet the card showed that they had a jacuzzi. That's an error. And that happens. There are errors on these cards. And those can get corrected, and that will impact, in this case, it would lower the assessed value, because there was an extra charge, if you will, for having the jacuzzi. Those are the kinds of things the assessor looks for. They make sure the square footage is right. They make sure that the upgrades are what, some people do more upgrades in their condos than others. You know, like. You should, you should go down to the assessor's. If they've visited your property, you should go and find out what the results of that reevaluation is.
They will just send those out as a matter of course?
They will send out, if it's a correction. And Andy, you may know the answer to that. Did they send out a correction? And introduce yourself, introduce yourself.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. So I sit on the Board of Assessors. If I can just give some background. Five, six years ago, Pin Oaks filed 30 abatements for their complex. I'm going to say 80% of the information that was in our cars was wrong. And we know that now. Many of the improvements that Jim had talked about, the different models that were provided there, for some reason, the same model was basically transposed and given to the Board of Assessors. A lot of that was corrected. Is it perfect? Obviously not. So that's, that's all I can tell you right now. But if you have, if your, if your inspection was done as part of an abatement, we're starting to schedule abatements now. I can talk to Don and say, let's get these people to notice that we're going to talk about it. You can come in, we can talk about it, and you'll see the process, what's going on. If it was wrong, it'll be corrected. So there's, there's, some people will come and say, well, it's just overpriced, and that's it. I mean, you need to do, people need to do their homework on the abatements. And, but again, Jim's issue of the raising, that, that's kind of weird.
Thank you, I thought it was weird, too.
We had a couple, I've been on the board now 11 years. We've had a couple cases where the new growth, the new construction kind of skewed some of the numbers. So what happened is that, while things got spread out, it may have reflected in a small decrease in your assessed value. But at the same time, other, other new construction or recent construction went up a little bit. So we might be seeing, I'll say, a ripple effect from that. The system is not perfect, I'll be the first to admit. But again, the 10% that Jim had talked about, plus or minus, I mean, if it's acceptable to the state, that's who you got to go with. But as, as I said, when I got reelected last time, you need to check your cards. I religiously check my card. And nothing changes, which is good. But at the same time, new construction comes up, sales, it's going to happen.
Yes, but can I say one thing about that? Is if you happen to have a home in our community, we have been here for 15 years. Some of us have been here for 12, but the, but the whole, you know, the whole process started in, I think it's 2004. And we are nowhere near as new as River's Edge, which is about 10 years behind us. We don't understand why we're being charged in the same way that new construction is being charged. Isn't there, you know, this is apples and oranges?
It's relative to sales in your area. I mean, I've been in town 25 years. The value of my house has tripled.
The value of, the value of Pin Oaks is not yet what we paid for them.
That's right.
Originally, 15 years ago.
Yeah. And what you're saying is possibly that lag, that it just has to catch up. I mean.
But we have had no sales up to, I would say, the past year. Finally, in 2018, we've had a number of sales. But you're not basing it on the 2018. Is that what you're saying?
It's up front.
You're not basing it on 2017. You're basing it on 2000, I mean, 2018. You're not, you're basing it on 2017.
2000, yeah.
So we had no sales. So I don't know how you can, you can say that we've gone up. We feel that we've gone down. Because we've been dealing with River's Edge next door, and people want a first floor, and they don't want to deal with townhouses, which is what we have. They have been selling more rapidly and more quickly next door, because that's what people are looking for. They're looking for living.
But you're also dealing with the geographic area. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'll point out Jim's reasoning for his neighborhood. Neighbors, neighborhoods have certain values associated with them. It's almost like a multiplier, the highest being 10 and the lowest being 1. There's no 1s, 2s, 3s, or 5s in town. There's a lot of 5s, 6s for the smaller properties that are in our one district, the small lots. The neighborhood I live in happens to be a 9. I live on the Noon Hill side off Noggettuck. But the thing is that what's driving that is that there's no more developed land out there. So that's what's driving some of that. You're, you're looking at an area that has developed, you're looking at the market that's driving prices. And I'm not saying yours specifically, but it's the area. I mean, there's a certain point where that, that will end.
Well, we, we do have some, you know, we also have some stores in our area. So that has been rezoned, I believe, to include a multipurpose or multi-dimensional. Isn't that a little different than a total residential area?
Oh, yeah, 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 it is. And again, getting back to your original question, when, you know, when the abatements, when the abatements get scheduled, I'll talk with Don and say, look, we need to let these people know that they'll be, they'll be there, and you can come in and you can sit through the process.
I appreciate that.
That's all I can, that's all I can say at this point. I mean, the numbers, and I have to admit, I know of the addresses, and I know what's looked at. But again, Pin Oaks and River's Edge have been problems since, since I can remember, just because of the assessed values. And it's not, I'm saying that literally, and because it's the information. The Board of Assessors gets the information from improvements from the Building Department. And if this is what the Building Department has, this is what's there. And if no one, if the person that owns a piece of property that's a new building doesn't let someone in, does let the assessor in to do the abatement.
Well, we have let people in.
Well, now they have.
All of us have, yeah.
Well, if this was two years ago this year, last year, five years ago, I mean, typically, we're on a five-to-seven-year cycle of looking through. So when you get the card, if you haven't called back, they make assumptions, assumptions are made. I mean, since, we've gone through, what, four assessors in the past six years?
But this is the second assessment we've had. Because we filed two abatements in the past 10 years or.
Yeah, which.
Seven years or whatever.
And I'm going to tell you that there are some people that file abatements every year for the exact same address.
Well, I can just, I get that.
But you have to realize, you have to realize, too, is that Norfolk is becoming a popular place to live. I mean, if you can't afford Medfield, and you can't afford Dover, you can't afford Sherborn, and you're going to move out. If you can't afford Walpole, I mean, realize that right over the border, I mean, there's million-dollar homes that are no bigger than mine. So.
Thank you, appreciate that.
No, it's, I'm trying to be honest, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to say there's, it's perfect. We know it's not perfect, and we're trying to, we're trying to fix the stuff we know. But unfortunately, we don't know a lot of the stuff unless people come in and ask. I mean, you're looking at 10,000 files and 10,000 different properties that could be evaded. And I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not saying that as an excuse. I'm saying that's the reality of the situation. And realize that the extent and the detail that has to go in to make sure every single abatement, or excuse me, every single assessment is correct, it takes.
You're getting a lot of abatements in our area. There's a good reason for it.
Honestly, 10 to 15 are pretty typical. This year's a heavy one. Couple of years ago was a heavy one. But realize that the, what's, the, most of them are right now are the Pin Oaks and River's Edge. If it's, if it's a corrective problem. Yeah. I don't, you're not, no. We have abatements for Boyd's Crossing that were just sold.
Don't tell me about Boyd's Crossing. It's not us.
It's not, it's not, it's not you, but.
It's not a 55 and over community.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not dealing with apples and oranges here. You know, you're dealing with all apples. You're dealing with apples and oranges.
I made the point.
There's a different kind of community.
I simply made the point that Boyd's Crossing, we're getting abatements for Boyd's Crossing, because they knew the price to pay. Now they're saying that's not worth that much? I mean, if they, they overpaid.
They paid it.
If they paid it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, so.
I think the difference to the, a lot of us feel, I think the difference in what we feel is Pin Oaks was built first, okay? And then they started building River's Edge. And that killed our values. They went way down. And that's why we filed for the first abatement, because we weren't making anything on the houses. We weren't even getting what we paid for them. And at this point, we've just gone up 14% this year, yet we still have not reached where we paid for these 15 years ago. Where you just said, yours has tripled. Ours hasn't even come back to the original.
If we paid 500, we didn't get 500 for some of our places. Those, they've been going for mid-fours. And that was due to the fact that they could come, go next door and buy a new, new, uh, new house. And we were being sort of, you know, discriminated against because we were older. You're not talking about huts, you're talking about houses.
No, I, no, I understand, I understand, I understand. I mean.
We're just old, that's all.
I mean, the perspective I look at is that the value of a house should, in theory, go up every single year except when there's a downturn in the economy. And also realize, too, when I purchased my house in 92, Jim, you were in town, too. I mean, realize that there was close to 300 homes on the market at that point, and we have probably a third less homes back then. So I mean, realize that, I mean, by tripling, it's not, I mean, it's, the value's gone up, and it's been expected. And I can tell you right now, I have filed an abatement for my property, not my house, because the land I have is all wet, and it was coated differently. So that's, so that, I mean, yes, I mean, you know, I look at my card because of that, but that's something that you have to look at, and I encourage you. I'm glad you're doing this to hopefully get an answer. But at the same time, there's some growing pains, too. You do, you do have a unique situation. I'm not going to say, I can fully understand it either. I mean, I'm echoing Jim. It just, some of the stuff just doesn't make sense. I spoke with the assessors this morning about this meeting tonight. And after Jim came in, we talked, and we're kind of a little bit at a loss. Could we be looking at the change of personnel? I do know that John Curran, who was here last year at this time, may have missed some of the assessments, just because of his newness on the job. There's, we had a six-month window. We had, let's just say, we had no rudder on the ship. And the staff was just trying to get bills out, and maybe adjustments weren't made properly. You also have to realize, too, is we rely on this Vision software, which is going through upgrades, too. And again, there could be errors associated with that, too. So I'm being honest with you. Again, it's not perfect, but we're, every single time we get an abatement, hopefully, we can, we can get that straightened out. Yes?
Can people file for an abatement at any time during the year? So that's it for the past year, or this year? So the next one will be when?
And honestly, if you want to get educated between now and then, that's what I can recommend. I mean, go, go and look at your card now. You know, I don't know if you've been to the assessors and printed out your card.
We didn't, no, we didn't have an opportunity to do that.
Okay, yeah. I, again, I, I mean, the business I'm in, I mean, I do record search all the time. Okay, yeah, I, again, I, I mean, the business I'm in, I mean, I do record search all the time. So I automatically thought that everybody sort of, maybe I was a little naive in the thinking that people would say, okay, I should need to find out what I'm getting taxed for. But again, I mean, as Jim had pointed out, the playroom over his garage, I built a shed 10 by 16. When the tax bill came, because I knew it was going to go up, they had me down for 240 square foot shed. So 10 by 16, it's 160 feet, so there was an error that was made. It happens, it happens.
Well, our units are back to back, or there were three units together. That's not a, you know, a standalone home. This is different. You have walls that are in common amongst these. So that's a very different thing than being charging people for a home, which is a three standing home. I don't, those don't equate.
The, the, the square footage, the square footage of the home plus the improvements, that's the, that's the starting point. If you have something unique in a home, and I can tell you right now, there's probably half a dozen homes in Norfolk that are basically what we call white elephants. Because no one will buy them in the conditions, they are a unique house that it basically detracts from the value. And those, those do exist in town, there's not that many, but they, they exist in town. There's other homes that have outrageous kitchens that are $150,000 kitchens. That, and the improvements, they have multiple sinks, multiple ovens, multiple dishwashers, they exist. And unfortunately, for, well, if this was yours, you'd be saying, you know, the price is way too high. But the reality of the situation is, I mean, these are also multi-million dollar homes and it's just, it's assessed that way. I was always surprised when I found out that our double sink in our bathroom upstairs was an, was an extra.
Excuse me, you, you mentioned Jacuzzis.
Jim did, but.
I did, I'm guilty, I'm the Jacuzzi guy.
I bet they walked in our places and thought we had a Jacuzzi. They're not a Jacuzzi, they're a big tub. And that's a big difference.
I'll, if I, if I just can explain, I mean, you have an oversized tub that would be an extra. You have a standard tub, which is 65 feet, or 65, sorry, 65 inches long, you know, 22, 21 inches deep, a standard tub. And that's, that's, but if they saw an oversized tub, they may, that may be a key error where.
They're all, they're all oversized.
They, but if it, your specific card, I don't know what it says, but if it does say Jacuzzi on it as improvement, that would be taken care of as the abatement. If the, if, when the assessors came through, they should see that, that change was, or that is not correct. But an oversized tub is considered an extra. I mean, if it's, if it's. It shouldn't be considered a Jacuzzi, but it should be considered an extra. Right, yeah, it's a, it's a tub, but it's an oversized tub, you know, it's a corner tub with seats or, you know, or, you know, you have multiple showerheads and stuff like that. I mean, all those are, all those would be considered extras. So, yeah, Jacu, I mean, the house I live in, before we bought it, there was a Jacuzzi in the family room. It was taken out and you could, you could see all the, you could see the scars left on the wall. But it was taken out for some reason. But again, I, when I, when we, before we bought the place, it was still on the building card when we bought the house and the assessor came through. Yeah. Yeah, you can, you can go to, you can go to the Board of Assessors, Kathy or Cheryl will print out your card for you.
Andy, I've never, Andy, I've never heard of a house with a Jacuzzi in the family room. That's a first.
I can't tell you which builder in town.
I'm not going to ask. No, gosh, no.
Jim, based, Jim, when we did, we did our kitchen, now back 20 years ago, the number of beer cans on the wall that we found were an indication of what they did there, so. Yeah, it was, let's just, let's just say we had some, we found some interesting stuff.
So, so I guess, and more, go ahead, sir.
Just a quick question, as a result of the abatement hearings, when the reviews are made of the abatement requests, whatever answer is given to those people, will they apply to the whole complex? Okay, so it'll have to be 2020 for those, for those folks who did not file the abatement request?
And I know from, from all the time we spent on the previous submissions, the abatements from Pin Oaks, I want to say almost every single one did get a reduction in their taxes. Because. The first, yeah, the first, the first abatement cycle. And most of, most of it was not related to square, that was six years ago. That was six years ago. Yeah. Again, the formula on how the market trends and how the market pressures, it's all part of a complicated formula and I'll be at first admit, I, I've seen it, I don't fully understand it. But everything is weighted and based on where you live, the surrounding properties. If there were no sales, they have to make a best estimated guess and that's, 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 that's essentially it. It's not exact science, I'll be the first to admit. The only thing that's exact hopefully is the measurements of your home and so.
What if you look at your card and there's an error on the card, do you still have to wait till January of 2020?
What I would do if you find an error on your card, see if they can address it now.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, thank you for coming in.
Sorry, I.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir, thank you. Have a safe evening, careful on that Jacuzzi, sir. I'm sorry it happened, but thank you. Thanks for coming in, yes, sir. Yes, I'm going to his service on Saturday. He was a good friend, I've known him for probably close to 30 years. Well, every time he took a golf swing, I had to take ad bill because watching him swing put me in pain.
He didn't get his money's worth.
He's a dear friend, I will miss him. I know, no, he was younger than that, wasn't he? Sushi, sushi? I'm trying to remember, is it sushi? What's his wife's name?
Suki. I think it's Suki.
He'll be missed, Suki. Yes, he did. Suki? Sushi, sushi.
Suki.
Suki. All right. Well, thank you, Andy, Andy, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
All right. So we're down to signing of the acceptance deed and grant easements for Norway Farms Drive LLC.
Yep.
Kevin, anything you need to, any questions or anything on it?
No.
Neither do I.
Just one page to sign on this.
Do we have to sign or do we have to vote?
Well, it's an action item, so I assume we have to vote to accept, well. Please consider signing the accept, that's a strange wording.
Yeah, it's.
Well, let's vote to accept it and that, and that covers us, let's do that.
All right, so I move to accept the deed and grant of easements for Norway Farms Drive LLC.
I will second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now we're covered. Andy, thank you. Please consider request for NCTV to use Town Hill for fundraiser on April 27th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Todd, you provide any enlightenment on that?
Unfortunately, I'm not aware of this one.
Okay.
A couple of low-key music acts, selling T-shirts ahead of time, doing some tie dye at the event, doesn't sound like.
Doesn't sound like a heavy lift.
Too wild. Seems perfectly reasonable to me.
Okay, you have a motion?
I move to approve the request for NCTV to use Town Hill for a fundraiser on April 27th, 2019 from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next item is consideration of appointment of the fire chief.
Are we down there already? We are, okay, did you have a chance to meet with Peter?
I did.
Oh, I know you did, of course you did, and it went well, what were your feelings?
Very well, you know, I haven't had a lot of exposure to many of the individuals that work in public safety. Poor choice of word, poor choice of words. But it was great to be able to sit down with him and learn about his 40 years experience about working in town here and to talk to him about, you know, his vision and what he sees as some great next steps for the department as a whole and to kind of talk through some of my concerns about, you know, his tenure and how close he is to retirement and how he feels that will affect his ability to be impactful in the department. And, you know, there was, there was a bunch of other things that we talked about. One of the big things that stuck out in my mind was he was so dedicated to ensuring that the product that was put out for residents was as of high quality as possible. And that was the one thing he kept going back to over and over again. And that really stuck with me because, you know, with all the other things that contribute to perception and feedback and criticism, to focus on that and that single thing, I mean, that's the most important thing that you can do in this type of business, right?
It's all that matters, at the end of the day, that's all that matters.
Right. So my only reservation past that was really, you know, the long-term impact to the town and mainly centered around, you know, if he was moved into this position and being as close to retirement as he is, what kind of liability the town would have from a financial perspective in paying towards his pension after his retirement. I worked with Todd to get some specifics into how that's calculated and exactly what that looked like. And it actually didn't come out to be anything of huge impact to us, I think it came out to something like $9,000 a year. So if you take everything that he can offer us over the course of the next three, four years or however long we are lucky enough to have him, I think that far exceeds whatever liability we would face moving forward. And so I would wholeheartedly support offering him the position at this point.
That makes two of us. I won't, I will just, I agree with everything you said, I've known Peter close to 30 years. When you have an individual who cares, I think you said it eloquently, he truly, truly cares for the town. And he, he's done some things over the years that I'm aware of, I don't want to dwell on too much of this, but this guy's got out of his way to help people. And he will keep our department stable, he will help us through this next phase of the fire station. And I don't mean that Chief Cole wouldn't, I don't mean that, but a new chief would not be in any position to do that. That's assuming we even got one on board in a reasonable period of time. And those three years will be instrumental to us, I'm 100% in agreement with you, so I, I think we're on the same page.
Absolutely.
So if you'll allow me, I will make this motion.
Absolutely.
I would move to appoint Peter Petrusik Fire Chief effective July 1st, 2019.
Do we have to go into a contract negotiation?
Subject to contract, well, that would be the next phase, subject to contract negotiation. Subject to any successful contract negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Peter, if you're listening, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well done, thank you.
Next item is reporting of the warrants and I believe.
These are me, yep. I move to approve the warrant dated, well, number 32, it's a different way to do it, I'm sorry, dated February 5th, 2019 in the amount of $573,467.23. And to approve the warrant dated February 1st, 2019 in the amount of $802,301.71. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, next item is the discussion item of selectmen goals.
I'll let you start this one off, sir.
So what seems like years ago, when we first discussed goals, we outlined a number of different initiatives and focus points that we wanted to go through as we went through this year. And I just wanted to maybe revisit those and see where we were and maybe just give some updates as to any progress that's been made or any reasons why things have been put on the back burner. I have a list here.
Go for it.
All right, so the first segment I had was centered around community engagement. The first item I had was to connect the town websites, what's new section to the town Facebook page and provide a stream of aligned updates direct back to the website, that's complete. The next was to implement a system to accept direct messages from the above mentioned Facebook page to increase engagement while still limiting open meeting law exposure, this is currently in process. We had a fantastic meeting with all of the administrators of the town Facebook pages. We presented to them the new townwide social media policy as well as our third-party service Archive Social that we're going to be demoing between now and town meeting. And I think that our next step is we're going to bring that policy to the Board of Selectmen for approval. And then we're going to outline to the community as to how this is going to impact our ability to engage with them. So this is definitely in process. The next one was to utilize the Facebook page to manage and communicate upcoming events, meetings and dates of interest. This, we were able to build integration so that my town meeting now takes all of the meetings that are posted there and creates a Facebook post on our town page. We're still working on a way to get the events and other dates of interest on there, a calendar that could be shared of some kind, so partially complete, but in progress. There were a couple of other initiatives that were centered around holding some reoccurring monthly office hours. I think you had identified a town hall kind of forum that we wanted to explore. Expanding the Conversation Corner program to a more interactive Facebook livestream, something that we could have discussed later on down the road. And then including some kind of visual budget component to the town website to allow people to see how taxes are split up based on their property and what they're paying in. All of these things are still awaiting proposal. Questions, comments? I only got two more sections, so I know. We had some initiatives that were around strategic planning, vision mapping, all of these are on hold mainly while we work through the B1 zoning working committee under the advisement of MAPC's representative that's helping us. We're going to put that on the back burner while we finish off that committee's action items and those recommendations. And then we'll move on to master plan updating and all those types of things. Town facilities was the last one, evaluating needs and timelines for a potential school extension. I know that is something that I believe we'll be hearing about as we move into Q2, Q3 of this year.
Probably in March.
Recalibrating police-fire projects, understanding where we are and where we're going to move forward, this is well in process and we're about to, you know, move past the police station at the end of March, we're going to have our open house, correct?
March 27th.
We hope to see everybody there for that and then we're going to be talking about what we're going to be doing with the fire station with our new.
I can update you on that.
Oh, beautiful, very nice. The last one was to assess, assess town government space needs, including senior center recreation, parking, et cetera. We recently did just put forth 34 new permit-only parking spots for residents along Liberty Lane, which has mitigated some of the overflow concerns that we had from our upper lot. But we are still looking at additional mitigation methods as we do see that filling up even now. We're going to talk about some of the senior center parking area improvements that we're looking to do in terms of paving and including lights as well as the plans that are ongoing for the recreation expansion down at Pond Street with the acquisition of land. That is everything that I have as far as updates on the goals that I, at least I had submitted.
I had several on the budget cycle, working with King Philip, we're in progress in doing that, we've had several meetings to date. Their initial proposal, Todd, you correct me, I think it's about 5.3, 5.4%, somewhere in that range. That's not unusual for them, it's better than the 10 and 12 we've seen in the past. We've asked them to try and hit a 3% target on the overall budget, not on the allocation. And at least three towns initially agreed on that. The preliminary allocation appears to, I won't say it favors us, but it doesn't hit us as hard as it did last year. It looks like Rentham is in the driver's seat on this one, but they got almost a free pass last year, so I guess it's their turn. I'm not even sure they had, they could probably pay it in checks, not even cash, probably didn't have to write a check. So that's work in progress. I tried to get a meeting with Paul this week and I was unable to do that, but I do have a meeting scheduled with him for next week. Did you get over this week?
Monday.
Monday, you're going Monday?
I'm going Monday.
Well, we ought to go at the same time then, because, well, no, you're going with the other town administrators, I don't want to intrude on that, I'll go separately, okay? I don't want to intrude on that. The budget, well, we're going to talk about the budget in a minute, Todd can go through that, but we're about where we normally are at this point in time. We got great news on our health insurance. Unbelievable news, it's rare that, I mean, we're happy with a 2 or 3 or 4% increase, in this case, we actually got a decrease. So that's really good news and we got it in writing, even better.
And it's signed.
So that's work in progress, but I'm, I think the department has done a good job on the budget this year when you consider that we're, Todd has only been in this role, although you've been handling the budget pretty much from day one on this, Todd, so credit goes to you on this. So that's in good shape. Police and fire, the police station is, has really only one major glitch left, we're having it regarding the HVAC systems. It's more the subcontractor than anything else, he's being incredibly difficult. I don't know if we've got this call or meeting, I don't.
I plan to be available tomorrow?
I am too, I said I'm available, but he hasn't confirmed it to my knowledge. They're just being very difficult. But nothing new with subcontractors, but that's really the last major glitch, everything else is in pretty good shape. The regional dispatch center will be operational April 1st, that is their target. The, we've signed the lease, we've signed the contract for maintenance. We have now a pretty good estimate on costs associated with this and allocations, although it needs to be refined one more time, but we're pretty close on that. Staffing has been settled, staffing has been hired between the towns, all of our full-time people are going to be part of the new organization, which is good news. It's, it's really state of the art. We did a tour for the Girl Scouts, which turned out to be a very large crowd, along with a lot of parents and you get the kids, you get the parents. Matt did an outstanding job in going through and articulating all of the benefits of this station. But it is, it's nice to have a station that actually is what it should be. On the fire station, we still don't have final reconciliation on this, we should have it 30 days, a little bit of luck. We should have final reconciliation on that. We have a meeting next Tuesday, George and I spent some time today, George Cronin, Chair of the Committee. We're proposing an alternative view of this, I'm speaking for me now, I'm speaking for George and I, we're on the same page on this. So we'll have to debate it, Todd's on the committee as well. We're pretty well convinced that, that the original plan of remodeling, for lack of another term, renovating is the right word, I guess, is the wrong answer. We think that tearing it down is the right answer. We think the architect's original drawings and numbers, we're not too thrilled with them. So we are going to propose an alternative to that on Tuesday and if the group agrees, if we get four positive votes, we will ask the architect to redesign a new structure based on a different configuration. It will be less square footage and, and we've been doing this enough now that I, I won't say that we're just uninformed, I think we're reasonably well informed on what the needs are of that station. I think that there's a good answer to this that will help us a lot and will come in fairly close to what we can afford. So I, we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to get this going here fairly quickly. If we can agree on a design, get the final numbers on this. If I remember, Todd, it's, it's probably 45 days for drawings, 30 days for bid, 30 days for review and decision. We, we want to get this project going in the summer, we want to get it going by June, that's our goal. Because if we tear it down, it'd be about a nine to 10 month project. Whereas if we renovate, it would be anywhere from a 16 to 18 month project. We still have some issues on relocation up at the DPW, but we're working on that, Bob McGee's been terrific. He's terrific on everything, I mean, he's just been so. He's terrific on everything. I mean, he's just been so helpful. But we think we, that's manageable and we don't think there are excessive costs associated with that. And we would build that in to making sure that we had an equivalent cost estimate versus reconstruction versus new construction. So we're, we're hopefully this Tuesday going to take a major step forward on this and get this thing going. It has been an interesting project, to say the least. Much more complicated than I think anybody anticipated. Much more complicated. And we've had, to be very honest, we've had some significant errors in the drawings that were brought up, that were done by the architect. And I'm not embarrassed to say that because it is a fact. And we'll deal with that in due time. Right now, we've got to get this finished. We're on the home stretch. And I do encourage people, come, uh, in March twenty-seventh, ten o'clock in the morning. Um, it'll be exciting. And I still can't believe
Bless you.
regional, regional dispatch is going to go live on April first. It's just somehow they should go April second. I just, April first doesn't sound right, but anyway. Uh, and it will provide a significant amount of benefits to all of our communities. Uh, the redundancies, the capabilities of this system are far outweigh where we are today. So it's a good thing. When we're all said and done, this'll be, we'll be okay. This'll all work. But it's been a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of work. A lot of hours spent on this thing. Uh, what else? I did bring my sheet and there was one other item that I had on mine. Um, have you got my sheet on your system?
I do.
Good. Tell me the one I missed.
Should be in your packet, Jim.
Oh, is it? I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's the last page.
Oh, wow. I didn't get that far.
You did public safety, you did the budget, public safety, Kevin did DPW, Kevin did organi-- I think you got everything.
Did we get it all? Thank you. Well, there's one here that we, I think Kevin, you and I would share even though we didn't really talk about it, which is new growth.
Yeah.
That is going to be a challenge for us. Um, the schools are looking at their enrollment. Uh, HOD is full. You know, you've got young, young kids.
Because of me.
It's your fault, actually, yeah. I did my contribution years ago. Yeah, it's all up to you now. But they're going to come in in March and, and talk about it. Uh, Ingrid has got, I think, a fairly good plan on how to deal with this. We just want to match it to some expiring debt as best we can.
Right.
Especially with the police and fire station going on the books now. I noticed we had a nineteen percent drop in our excluded debt, which is nice. But that's expected. Five more years on the schools?
Uh, I think, uh, right around there.
I think it's five years left on the schools. Uh, the middle school and the high school, not, not the Freeman Kennedy. And I think the library's only got about three years left.
Right.
So, um, that will leave us only with the Freeman Kennedy. We do, we did receive a million dollars from SBAB for the roof. And we have about nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, I believe, that we got back from the state. But the project is a two-and-a-half million dollar project.
Correct.
So we're a half a million dollars short. Um, so we're going to have to ask to borrow that on the warrant for town meeting, uh, within the, within the budget, not excluded. Um, we have to do that. The, uh, state now only reimburses us. They used to reimburse for buildings twenty years or older. Now they only reimburse for buildings twenty-five years and older. And the wing, which is where the real problem is, is less than twenty-five years. So, um, and we can't wait. That, that, there's mold, there's leaks. It has to be fixed.
Structural integrity.
Yeah, has to be fixed. So we will bring an art, an article forward for, um, a half a million, probably about a half a million. I think it's two, five and change.
Sounds accurate.
Is that right? Two, five and change. It's a little over two, five.
Yep, for the total project.
Right, so we're, it'll be around, somewhere around five-twenty, five-thirty, somewhere in that range. Uh, we do have the contracts. Everything is done. Just a matter of funding it now. And that hopefully is the last because we've replaced some of the mechanical issues associated with the school. New oil tanks, things like that are all taken care of. So that should take care of that school pretty well for a while. I hope. With a little bit of luck. I think that's it.
Just if I can speak to the progress towards the ten percent of affordable housing. We did speak at our last meeting. Uh, now, I think we're going to schedule a meeting mid-March. Uh, it's been a little crazy with all of the other selectmen's meetings going on, but, um, and kind of revisit our housing production plan and look at some of the specifics. And, uh, there's been some ideas floated by the, by the trust on, on maybe some ways to add a few more units. Um, because of the market, we haven't been able to do what we had been doing, which was, um, going out and buying single-family homes. And we did, I did just get hired by the town of Medway to, um, sell a unit there. So it's some revenue in, to the Affordable Housing Trust that, not a lot, but helps us towards our goal.
You're not being fair. You've, you've, you're being too kind on your, you know, not kind enough in yourself. Sue has gotten certified to be able to do this and she's been hired on a number of situations and she's generated almost a wash, pretty close, on, on your expenses. I mean, it, it, she's revenue-neutral to us, which is all positive. Based on your services that you're able to provide to other communities and other towns. So it's worked out very well. We're looking at, um, some alternatives. Um, we're looking at potentially rentals. Uh, we're looking at apartments, different situations on pieces of land. We have some land, um, that we have. We, we're trying to, we, we're getting priced out of the individual home market here. You know, I, I mean, we had a model that worked pretty well for us. We don't make any money on it. We lose money every time we do this, but there's an acceptable loss ratio to this and we're starting to exceed that. And we don't feel comfortable with that. So we're looking at possibly, uh, getting into the building business, to be honest with you. Uh, we're looking at two parcels of land. Uh, one that we own and one that we could acquire, which would, uh, potentially help us in many ways because it would solve a different issue. Without naming where it is, but there's a couple of issues around that piece of land that if we could make it all go away and, and acquire this land would make everybody happy.
It's just a good.
And it would fit in perfectly in, in the area.
It's a good time to take a look at the housing production plan and some of the ideas and, and, um, kind of think outside the box.
There's one other piece of news and that's Southwood. Uh, you, I, do you, are you current on that? I don't know.
Like, I might be.
You might be. You know, there's a buyer.
I do.
Okay, yeah. Well, we won't belabor it. We'll let it go at that then. Yeah. But it is good news. And a, and a well-financed buyer. Which is the important part. I was shocked.
Buyer.
Well, I was shocked at the price to tear down those buildings. I just, I couldn't believe that. Wow. Seven, eight million dollars to tear those buildings down?
Wow. Is that the cleanup too?
Including the cleanup. Yeah, well, they're loaded with asbestos.
Right, so that's.
And the hospital has an oil leak and, you know, I mean, so, yeah. But that's, I couldn't believe that number. That has nothing to do with the pollution. Pollution. That's just taking the buildings down. But they're serious, so it's good news.
Great news. Great news, yeah.
For many reasons. Many reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that would certainly help us in terms of our affordable housing numbers.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Be terrific.
And I think part of it, they're talking about maybe approaching us on a lip. Uh, which they have done in two other towns. Uh, one of whom I have, know a selectman in that town. They spoke very highly of these people, so. That's certainly something we might want to take a look at. Uh, I haven't got anything else.
Approval of minutes.
Oh.
So last, uh, meeting, I wasn't able to attend. Um, you've seen all of the meetings.
Yeah, sorry about that.
All of the minutes and you did approve them.
Correct.
But I just want a formal vote if we could, and I can give you, read out the dates.
Okay.
So I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes for May first, two thousand eighteen, May eighth, two thousand eighteen, October second, two thousand eighteen, October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, December eleventh, two thousand eighteen, and February eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Say them again?
Here.
Sorry.
Thank you. That's easier. Alright, so I move to accept the meetings for May first, twenty eighteen, May eighth, twenty eighteen, October second, twenty eighteen, October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, December eleventh, twenty eighteen, and February eighth, twenty nineteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Sue, I thank you for the yeoman's work that you and Nancy have been doing and getting everything current on that. Uh, I know it kind of got a little lag when Marion was out with her ill, illness and got a little behind.
Two sets away and we're, we're good.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I did, just a quick thing. I did speak with the auditors. A routine conversation. Um, they're very happy with us. Um, you may be right. You may get bounced up. We had an interesting conversation about that.
Okay.
So we'll see. That would be a coup.
We'll see.
Yeah. They were very pleased
Good.
with our controls. So, we've, we've had very good audits. Our audits have been excellent. They'll always find a couple of small recommendations because that's why they get paid.
Oh, they've been here, when I first got here, they were here for well over two weeks onsite. Now they're only here for two and a half days.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah.
We get them what they need.
Yeah, there's a reason for that. So, yeah. No, they, they were, they, we discussed it at length and they're, they're very pleased with our, our, we'll get a good audit. As we have every year.
One other item on unanticipated business. Um, I got in my office from Mr. McGee, the, uh, snow budget deficit. He's looking for approval to deficit spend, the snow and ice budget, um, based on this past storm and probably the next storm coming up. While he's at a positive balance now, uh, it's likely that they're going to, with all the invoices that they'll be processing, need to start deficits.
Well, we heard a prayer for a real storm tonight, so I mean, really.
The storms that they're experiencing of late with the, you know, the ice and the salt and everything that tries to go down.
They're a pain.
Um, it doesn't do what they really need. They need, you know, twelve inches of fluff and it's a lot easier for everybody. So, um.
I thought we had approved the deficit spending, but we can do the motion again. I, for some reason, thought we had done that, but I didn't see it in any of the minutes.
This is the first, I believe, that Bob's brought it to us.
Maybe a previous year.
We do it every year. It's the only account we can deficit spend.
Gotcha. Uh, need a motion?
Please.
I move to approve the request for snow budget deficit spending for the year twenty nineteen.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. And let's hope we don't get that big snowstorm.
Right.
Fingers crossed. Nothing else is on the agenda.
Um, we got to, we got to tie in. It, it, when is the advisory board going to start?
I'm going to book their, is my phone, I can tell you. I just sent Steve McDonough an email. So the, I believe the warrant closes on the fifth of March at our next meeting.
Have any articles submitted yet?
We have a few. Um, so we'll close it on March fifth and we'll get it to Dave DeLuca the next day. And I'm going to schedule the advisory board to start meeting the following week. So that would be March thirteenth. They may not be ready. Um, they're going to be scheduled to meet March thirteenth, twenty, twenty-seven, April third, tenth, and seventeenth.
Okay.
They may not need all of those meetings, but
Yeah, they probably won't. They probably won't. Okay.
It doesn't look like it's going to be a heavy warrant.
Uh, what, what are some of the articles we've gotten in?
Um, the town government study committee wants to present a couple of articles. One is to, uh, is just some language cleanup on a bylaw and, um.
What kind of bylaw?
They're going to come in next week and talk to you about that. Or talk to you about both of their articles.
So the bylaws, the way they're written now?
Mm-hmm.
Periods are missing, references to other items.
Oh, it's just house cleaning?
Just house cleaning.
Yeah, okay.
Right, um.
No substantive changes.
And these are not zoning. These are operational guidelines. Okay.
We have the typical couple of street acceptances from the planning board. Um, they have sent those in. Um, I don't think we, Todd and I just had a meeting about this yesterday.
That's what the school roof is one of the items.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there'd be a, there'd be a borrowing article for the school roof.
Carol has one article. Um, and that is to choose the ballot, the following town officers. The standard one.
Article one.
And that is all we have received so far.
Okay.
So I will send out a reminder Monday to kind of get everybody's attention to it and, um, make sure nobody's.
I know, I know that the schools are considering an article, uh, regarding, um, vaping.
Are, are elementary schools? Wow, that's frightening.
Well, it's, it's being proposed by.
It's being proposed by an elementary school, school committee member.
Right, not tied to the function of the school.
It isn't tied to an issue at the school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, it, it is, before everybody gets all worked up over that. No, it isn't an issue at the school. It's more just kids around town, older kids that, I mean, we've all seen it.
And then Todd just mentioned earlier, there'll be an article for the school roof.
Right, which should be a little over five hundred.
And then we have all the standard, CPC will come in with their standard ten percent, ten percent, ten percent. Revolving accounts and all that standard language. But we did, um, I asked Jack and he sent the template for prior, kind of his template for each spring meeting warrant. So Todd and I will work on that together.
So we right now have a five hundred thousand dollar gap.
Right now, we have a five hundred thousand dollar gap.
That's what I thought.
Not, not including any free cash, not including adjustments to the asks from the various departments, not including our final.
What, what, I don't remember exactly what a percentage point's worth on KP.
Well, five point five right now.
What's the number? I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
I don't have it on.
You don't either, huh? Uh, it's right here.
Do you have it there?
Because I'm going to guess KP's going to end up around three and a half.
Which will bring us down.
But that's my guess. But I think it's a good guess.
That's what I anticipated as well.
I think it's a good guess. Yeah. Um, there it is. Alright, so that would I guess fifty, sixty grand off the number. Some, so that'll help. So we're going to have to, we have four hundred thousand of free cash, right?
Currently correct, yes.
And have we gotten any capital requirements other than I know the chief wants a car? And then we have the communication devices.
Uh, usually the capital will wait until the fall once.
Well, but he has, he, we could push some of it off to the fall, but what about these communication devices?
I can check with them.
With the new station?
I can check with them.
Let's check, yeah. Because he may, he, there may be something we can't wait.
I see.
Because we're going off an analog system, so. So, but I, do you know of any other capital items from Bob McGee?
No, off the top of my head.
Except for the COA.
Except for the COA for the paving of the
Parking.
upper lot.
Yeah.
But that can wait.
That can wait.
And how much is that?
I don't know.
We didn't get a full quote because of the other components associated with it in terms of lighting additions and train engine and whatnot.
Because we want to hang on to two hundred thousand of free capital, I mean, uh, two hundred thousand of free cash. We don't want to go below that. In agreement. Okay. So we're in, we're in hand grenade range here. We're probably
We're close.
two, two fifty off right now. That's not bad. I know, that's terrible to say, quarter of a million dollars off, but on a four hundred million, on a forty million dollar budget, that's not bad.
From the first go around, it's not too bad.
No, right.
We've been further years past.
Okay. Kevin, if you have any thoughts on areas as you go through it that you think we should take a look at?
Will do.
And I'll do the same. We'll share them to Todd and you can do your magic.
Okay.
You going to get that contract back to us?
Yep.
Sometime?
The very near future.
Hmm?
The very near future.
Very near future?
Yes.
Like next week?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Todd? That's it for my, uh, seat here. Sir?
Um, do you believe that, oh, um, Lawrence Street Bridge, uh, progressing well, albeit still slowly. Um, I did update the.
I went down there today.
Yeah.
Slow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it, it's progressing, but you know, a- as anticipated, it is moving slowly right now.
Beautiful day.
Yeah. Uh, we did update the format in which we were posting updates onto the website. So those who are going to check that, it's no longer just an outlined square box grid. We've included sections that identify percentage of progress, things to be completed before the next, uh, update. Really just trying to increase the accountability and tracking our progress and ensuring that we have complete transparency in terms of where we are and where we're going. Uh, we did get some dates associated to each of the milestones and right now we're targeting May seventeenth as the day that we're going to be reopening the road.
And that's a backend date?
Correct.
Hopefully sooner.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I know we're still working on trying to get a grant for the Mill Street Bridge. Uh, Mill River Bridge, excuse me.